How are you?
We're going to be in the future. So you have time for that. I think we're both past that.
I mean, just. I'm not really going to. I just don't even know. Real life. You know, we recognize. That was a fact. And he's always been like. Outside, we might, you know. I've been. We know that. But there's that. You don't. I don't know. That's it. Why not? Well, we can have. Well, who would want to? They have the past.
They get.
They get some stuff. I get home and they go through. Very good. I'm all right. He. Yes. He never was. He ran deep. She's speaking this morning. Definitely. He would talk. I'm doing.
There you go. Just for all. Especially now. Points about. Now we're doing here.
Now, those are purple. And the thing I'm not going to grab.
Okay.
It's how much do you still? I think.
They said it's fine. If someone's paying it. So we're just out.
I don't know what you're doing. What is he doing? He's got a panel something that were. He's in Ohio. He's in Ohio. Something job. I don't. I'm going to play my. You have to double D. Okay. We're live. We're coming past it on Facebook and YouTube. Don't know. From our. I check. I've got Google. Someone feel proud of me. We're going. We're going to go ahead and get started with our work session. Uh, so number one item on the tonight's work session is our dot G O V domain transition discussing on uh the migration of cities digital infrastructure to a dot gov domain for improved security and trust. Uh, in uh. I've got uh. Supporting information and uh details on the benefits uh for public consumption. Uh, one of the benefits or a list of benefits for us to do this is going uh. It establishes the city's official digital identity recognized by the federal government. It ensures all city websites and emails are verified and protected by federal level security protocols. Uh, reduces risk efficient and impersonation attempts targeting residents strengthens transparency, public confidence and operational credibility and security. I've already applied for that. Uh, it's about ten business days, which is going to put me right in the middle of the week uh when I should get a response back. The government shutdown also affected uh the government's domain register. No, no big surprise there, but uh so it's a little slower than uh normally would have been. Normally, we would have already had that ready to go, but uh it's going to take a little extra, a couple extra days. Any questions on the on that? I've got a pretty good idea. Uh, new city website deployment. Uh, website uh right now is about ninety-five percent complete. The plan is uh I'll bring a presentation to uh the super fifteenth meeting. And as a demonstration of what we're looking at, so we can all get a tech, take a look at it. And uh offices, suggestions. Whatever some part of the delay is, I found a guy. In our utilities department. So anybody from utility, nobody from. Asbury G S G I S guy. There's a call. And it turns out he's got some really great software tools. Yeah, and uh that uh he just said he's got some of those. So the one, one of the, the primary uh uses for the cool software that he's got over there is um the resident issue tracker that I made such a big deal about. Is uh would be made easier and a whole lot cooler and uh easier for our residents in a much more robust uh application. That uh with the way the the G S G D I S and then Esri with the map overlays, things like that. So it's a, it's a finer tuned product. Uh, so I'm going to hold off on what I'm, what I've already done uh in, in that regard. Um, I was piecemealing. You guys don't know what I'm talking about. It was uh our resident issue tracker. The idea is as a resident, see an issue, call a tree, dead raccoon, whatever it might be, open up, open up the app. Drop the pin or the pin will already be dropped where you are. Uh, you can adjust that, fine tune it if you need be. Enter, take a picture of the issue, insert some text about what the issue is, or use voice to text on your phone. It'll take that, transcribe it for you so you don't have to type. And then submit it. And uh that will automatically go to the applicable city department that uh is going to handle that issue. Uh, you'll receive an immediate notification that uh your issue has been submitted. Uh, as soon as that is uh, as soon as that's accepted by that department uh and assigned, you'll get another notification saying it's been assigned by whomever. And once that's done, whomever, the dead raccoon will take a picture, selfie of themselves, hold the dead raccoon and over the garbage can and tell you that uh your, your issue has been solved. Uh, that's going to be visible. Uh, all of those issues are going to be visible uh on the uh city's website by then. And uh so you'll be able to see the status. I will move from uh received, in progress, completed uh type call. So you'll be able to see, see your issue, see where it is. Uh, and if it's uh delayed, there's no movement in it, then it's not going anywhere, it's not a black hole, you'll be able to address it again. Uh, and the second time that you address it, it'll also come to me, come to you, uh, the applicable district council person. That's affected wherever that issue might be. Uh, so we'll get additional notifications uh if that's been slowed up the process somewhere so that now we'll know, we'll be alerted again. It's like, hey, we can take a look at this, find out what's going on. Uh, there's something. That we need to do to uh. That's an obstacle for us. Uh, it might be something that's holding up the whole progress. Well, you'll, you'll be notified of that. But that's, that's the whole idea of uh the issue, uh resident issue track. And I've come across a set of software uh tools that one of our employees in the utility challenge that makes setting up and developing an application a whole lot easier and a whole lot more robust and stable and easier to use for our residents. I was going to piecemeal just for cost savings. Once we'll use this uh, what they use called some over. I mean, I was here to uh uh just in licensing to have something like that. Of course, it's a larger scale, but I, I was going to recreate that at a much smaller scale at next to no calls. So, but now we're going to still be able to maintain the next to no calls part, but we're going to be able to do a much better job of it. But we'll have a preview of website December fifteenth, and I'm looking to uh sometime launch January one. Is uh. That's a development day. That's a developer time schedule. And uh, but we're going to do our best to get that out and uh, but it's going to be the first year. So. Uh, we have an A D O, A D O C government work program, labor support program for cleanup and maintenance. And the draft agreements on file for your review. Uh, this is. This is an agreement with the Alabama Department of Corrections. Would allow the city to use eligible supervised inmate work crews to support municipal labor needs such as litter removal, mowing, debris clearing, and general public property maintenance. The idea is uh we're looking to supplement our, our uh, our work crews on our uh. Uh, city cleanup efforts as well as uh on our main corridors and also in our cemetery. Got some. That's worth. For example, I, and we, we use round up all headstones and over the years. With that, uh, with the vegetation being fueled on those headstones, it's promoted some of the headstones end up sinking and turning uh to repair those. Uh, and fill in that so that we can still use that because it's too weedy by hand around here. Headstone and stuff. Let's ask them a lot of any Kim or any group of the inmates. And uh, we, we have three guys. To maintain that and uh and all the functions of the cemetery. So the idea is we can get an extra crew in there. These guys will be able to fill in that straight and these headstones up and then fill in that area around those headstones with gravel, something like that, so that they can keep that, now keep that erosion out way, maybe crush it on instead of ground. Around us, it seems not be the purpose of that uh inmate work crew in cemetery. Um, there are supervisor uh supervision requirements. Uh, there's actually a uh safety compliance training uh by whoever uh our supervisor is going to be. You have multiple people's place for that to supervise because we would go down, pick these uh folks up. Uh, bring them up here and uh have to supervise and maintain their security uh on that. And uh. There's a safety compliance training that's necessary and a certification that's necessary for whomever is going to uh be supervised that work crew. Um, so that's some things we can look at. There's some uh, uh, the billing and the invoicing is fifteen dollars per, per man. We would end up, uh, we'd be responsible uh for feeding these gentlemen uh lunch. And. The notion is that we would uh, we would have uh, as I understand it, as it's been explained to me, these are nonviolent, uh, short time, under five years. Uh, inmates, uh, no sex offenses, no violent crimes, anything of that nature, older folks, maybe. That uh. The idea there is also that we show the utmost respect uh since a short time and it'd be kind of nice uh for them to show back up in uh two years, three years and find their job. Which we would be more than happy to uh, to consider. So. Any questions on that for you guys? I mean, it's kind, it's kind of the air. It's not, it's not, uh, you know, it's not a solid uh idea for that, but it's, it, it is still a possible option uh to what we're looking at. And uh, but you know, there's liability concerns. We're having to have a conversation with uh Mr. Key. Find out that so there's still some work to be done, but just let's, yeah. And uh. And I'm going to be digging uh and making phone calls down there and, and uh getting some more information. Get them on, and then turn my call. Then. Yeah, so I'm not. I'm going to be asking for the authorization to pursue, prepare and submit. Oh, wait a minute. Okay. On to the next one. And usually the most important thing that uh the city is going to engage in anytime in the next decade. Raise the standard Sheffield three sixty-five. So. Clean up. And. Here we go. Okay. It's a comprehensive citywide initiative. It's designed to reset expectations, rebuild civic pride, unify residents around one clear and measurable goal. Sheffield will become a clean, orderly, dignified place that people are proud to call home. And we're going to do it within three hundred and sixty-five days. Uh, for decades, our greatest challenge hasn't been money. It's not jobs, it's not growth, it's appetite. A slow generational slide into the belief that nothing can improve, that decline is inevitable, and that standards no longer matter. This initiative will end that cycle. Uh, the Sheffield three sixty-five ties cleanup, compliance, support, transparency, and cultural change into one coordinated synchronized effort. Got a seven month cleanup plan for all ten primary corridors, corridors into our city center, followed by a five month district cleanup rotation, one month per district. Citywide ordinance compliance reset with a three hundred and sixty-five day grace window on all new property code enforcement. Pause, uh, we're going to pause that new property enforcement so that every resident gets a fair, equal restart. You'll get a notice of any property violations uh in the mail. This is what you're in violation of. This is what you can do to mitigate that violation. Here's a list of folks that are willing to help you if you need. And you have three hundred and sixty-five days to make it happen. Everybody's going to get one of those that's in violation. And on day three sixty-six, the hammer comes down across the board. We'll be able to then fairly and equitably, equitable believe uh enforce our property violations across. Right now, I think the problem, what, what we're dealing with is one resident will get a notice of a violation and his neighbor will be in worse violation of that same ordinance, but not get a notice. And maybe uh a city block down the street will be in worse violation than both of them. And um, that's kind of a problem that since it's such a widespread issue throughout our city, uh, it's quite difficult to mail all of those out simultaneously. So questions that happening is, it seems selected because one resident will get that notice and his neighbor won't. Um, so what we're doing is we're going to put a call, so I'm going to ask for a call. What a question. Yeah. So I haven't still. Yeah. So I haven't still. Yeah. My.
Yeah.
So I haven't still. Yeah. Yeah. And the, the other component to this is a volunteer support network. Uh, we have groups and civic organizations rotary. Uh, Guanas stated uh their desire to help out at some point. Uh, we have uh K T S B, Keep the Chills Beautiful and groups such as that and a lot of individuals, a lot of individuals that want to help. The only way that we get any effective news out of that volunteer effort is uh to have a support system set up. Uh, and be able to accept that and manage uh that, that, that volunteerism. Um, I'm looking at doing that uh from a digital standpoint, there'll be a form and things like that, so we'll be able to manage and keep a running network. And it's also necessary, we do that on the front end of that because that's also the list that's going to be included in these violation notices. So when you get a violation notice, here's a list of folks that are willing to come help you uh if you need it. And uh, I think a year, a year is going to be enough time for everybody to kind of get uh, get right. It's going to take the city a year to uh clean its house. Um, and uh, and then, and then we're going to come out and uh expect everybody else to say, I'm going to ask you to do it from now on unless we're willing to do it. That's the point.
Hey, Mike, are you taking questions? So now this.
Um. I'd love to, but what's the protocol? Can't about what?
It's for me.
Okay, well, we're not going to get out of here, uh, but yeah.
Uh, just a question on this particular subject.
Counted a few.
Oh, true.
Oh, yeah, we've got it. We've got a nice podium now.
Brilliant.
And uh.
Do I need to announce myself and so forth?
Just your name.
I might be right. Um, a question, uh, and I'll reference back as well when you talk about cemetery. Because we only have three guys.
Yeah.
Uh, and then you were just talking about code enforcement, and I know there's only two guys in the building.
Yeah.
The three guys we're talking about, are those three guys that are associated just from the cemetery, or is that the whole citywide crew?
No, that's just.
There's three people who are responsible for maintaining.
The cemetery, yes.
I got you.
And that includes the administrative side of that, uh, burials, uh, as well as maintenance.
Got you. All right. Uh, but I was trying to get a scope of the land. When you're talking about uh this three hundred and fifty-five day effort cleanup city, as you know, it's a particular seventy-five, really high. Isn't the city, so, so let me give you an example.
Okay.
So I live at six hundred Austin, and I've been asking for a year just to get the stop sign in front of my house straightened up because it sits like this and nobody will come straighten it up.
Yeah.
That's a simple example.
Yeah.
Other kind of thing that I'd love to see. But m- more than one. Across from my home, you know, our codes say, hey, if you own a property, if you've got a sidewalk, it's your responsibility to maintain the sidewalk, it's your responsibility to maintain.
Yeah.
Essentially, your property all the way to curb.
Right.
Across the street from me.
Yeah.
Completely overgrown.
Yeah.
Sidewalk demolished by tree roots for many years.
Yeah.
And the city has never maintained it.
Right.
I, I pay the arcres comes out and cleans it. I expose what's left of the sidewalks, but still there are two really overgrown trees. And let's say half of that sidewalk over a hundred and fifty foot span is just gone, right? Overgrown, demolished, just gone. So when we talk about the city cleaning up, my curiosity goes to, and I'm not going to. So, but my curiosity is, so when we say to a homeowner. The sidewalk on your property, you have to maintain it.
Yeah.
But the sidewalks gone.
Yeah.
What are we going to do about, what are we going to do about that as the city? Because it seems to me would be unreasonable to expect the city to replace every busted sidewalk in the city because we've got a lot of busted sidewalks. So what, what are we?
Um, so, thank you, Mike. Um, the, the plan is. Um, we have ten main ingress into our city center, and I'll publish these noted, those ten main corridors into the city center. Uh, the estimation is that it's going to take us seven months to get through those. To your question, the following five months, uh, we're going to do a month per district. Uh, we're going to start district one, two, three, four, five, seven plus five is twelve. We've got twelve months now. There's only sixty-five, right? Um. The, yeah, what we're going, we're going to find those. And all of the support network, all of these groups, all these cleanup efforts, and then the city's uh efforts are going to be concentrated in that district within that period of time. This is what we're doing. We're here between this date and this date, and we're going to do these things. Sidewalk, uh, cleanup and go, we're going to go through the neighborhoods just like we did on the corridors. And I'm talking about pressure washing sidewalks, curbs, gutters, cleaning out gutters and everything. And if, I mean, that's hard, uh, but it's something that's, I think it's necessary. If we're going to really claim this to be a reset, then we're going to put ourselves up to the world and say that we're going to be out of the business and we want folks to move here. We want businesses to look at here. Uh, we want investors to spend their money here. Then this is, this is, this is the, this is step number one to make that happen. Uh, so when we get in there, yeah, we're going to hand busted sidewalks. We've got sidewalks that are in bad shape and disrepair. Uh, we're going to pick those up, clean those up the best that we can, uh, repair what we can. Sometimes sidewalks aren't the greatest things to try to repair. Uh, sometimes it becomes, you know, a little more, it ends up being, making it worse. Uh, because it kind of looks like it's okay and you step on it, you can still roll. I've got class ankles, I roll my, I roll my ankles all the time walking around here. And uh, but um, and yes, we're going to identify the worst of those. And those are our uh, also on our agenda, we have a, what we call, actually, at least what I've called it, the dirty thirty. It's uh thirty, uh, thirty items, so it's five, uh, top five items from each district. A quick hit uh improvement uh projects and sidewalks are included in, in that. Um, so our priority uh from now on is going to be fixing those, those sort of things. So when we go and look for funding. You know, some, some of our funding efforts been concentrated otherwise, which is fine. So we have some real nice trail systems. Um, but it's, it's hard for me to fathom uh spending a lot of money on a new trail system through the woods when we have sidewalks that folks can't walk on in our own neighborhoods and drive our houses. And I'd like to see those repaired. Uh, and, and a great trail system. I want it all. Uh, but I, I, I want to rearrange the priority of how we go about getting those things. I, I think um lifestyle. Uh I think um lifestyle and quality of life for our residents are more important. Um on everyday life. And so to answer, does that answer your question? I mean, so that, that, that's the whole point of doing this. And we're gonna identify, we're gonna come across stuff. And that includes those signs. Get, that's one of the things I guess in my, in my campaign even out, so every, every sign we got is a crook. Even the new ones, you know, so it's uh we're gonna straighten them up. We're gonna paint the ones that are rusted. We, you know, we, we can afford rusted, I think, and and paint those poles and and try to get. Maybe we can wash some of the signs, try to get some, and we got old signs uh a lot. Uh what we can't replace, um then we'll try to wash them, try to get some of that reflectivity back, some of those signs. If I didn't, maybe they're just dirty. And if we clean them, they'll, you know, get some reflectivity back. Some are just. So far faded that it's, it's, it's not gonna matter what we do to them, then those are the ones that will slate for immediate replacement. Uh but sidewalks is a very, very important component to this whole process. Because I feel like the walkability of our city is paramount uh for our residents. And the idea is let's provide something that means a lot to us. And everybody else is gonna wanna come see it instead of worrying about, well, let's do this for everybody that doesn't live here, so they'll come. Let's do this for us and make our lives great and everybody's gonna like it. So, that answers the question. Okay. So really, I, I'm, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go through all this. Um, you know, cause we're, we're not on the clock, but we do have the clock. And I could go all night and I don't want us, I don't want us to go four hours here. These folks have like that life. Not everybody, this is my life now, so I'll stay here till midnight running my mouth, but I don't expect anybody. So I won't go through and read this entire plan because it is in depth. And I will publish it to them and so that if I feel the reading, we'll make copies of it and provide it uh for the city hall. Absolutely. Chris, this might be for you. We still have the guys, I know years ago, they, we get the pickup truck and some of the.
That was me doing that.
I wouldn't say that.
Yeah, we, we've still been over that. Right now, it's just, we didn't, we had, had the time.
I was just curious, I know one time I wanted to say.
I, I, I've never understood why the police department was over strict signs. Yeah, so yeah, we're, we're still over the stop signs and stuff. I went through about two years ago and straightened up almost all of them.
Yeah.
At that time, we had uh about three hundred stop signs that needed to be upgraded. And uh at that time, that theater was about nine thousand dollars a stop sign, I guess. So I'm sure it's a little bit higher than that thousands for the signs.
I mean, I was just curious if y'all still did it or straight apart.
Now, we're still doing it as we can get around to it.
I don't see how, you're a good as you are. Thanks, Chris. Gee, I'm sorry. Um so to tonight, um I'm asking that we just, that we adapt, uh adopt this as a, as a resolution. As an initiative, the uh funding of this, the stamp this. Uh we just ended uh budget this week. Surprise! And uh but we had a good time. Look at it. So uh and and I think that it's necessary for us to look at. And I think it'd be uh. We'd be doing ourselves in the city of the services, but we didn't put our stamp.
That'd be a good, let's, let's look at that.
And I mean, because uh uh you know, so it's, it's, it's hard to make financial decisions. On acquisitions, purchases when uh you don't really have a good firm grasp of the deal. That just came in this week or last week. Uh yeah, and uh so. That's why uh the voting on the components of this part of it. Is uh I'm asking for December first and December fifteenth are two city council meetings in December. That'll give us time to go over that budget. That's worth it. So like I said, I'm, I'm not gonna, there's eight pages there. I'm not gonna read. Uh if anyone, see anyone have any questions about this initiative specifically just to this initiative? I am gonna publish it. You know, you're all gonna have access to, to get rid of all things. So. It's fascinating. It's the first time we're doing uh a lot of this. So. That initiative encompasses number four, number five, number six, uh and now to number seven. That's another thing I wanna ask uh the board is and and mention this, I think it's one of the before. It's a proposal to increase the penalties uh and add a mandatory uh cleanup service. As part of sentencing for littering and dumping, uh illegal dumping in the city. Um the state, as I understand, the state law allows for three thousand dollars. The municipal code states that first defense is five hundred and then I think the max is fifteen hundred. I'm asking for us to adopt the state law. And so that we do it up, so that we can have a three thousand dollar fine for littering and illegal dumping in our city. And a mandatory community service rider with that. And that's something for you guys to consider. And if you wanna do any research, kindly, then. We'll ask for a vote on one of our December meetings to finish that up. Number eight is emergency shelter operations standard operating procedure. So, um. I wasn't able to get uh a sit down with Ricky McNamara, Recreation Department Head. Uh these past two weeks, I haven't yet. I talked to him today. Uh we're gonna go in there Thursday. And sit down and have a conversation. As I understand it, uh there may be the beginnings of. Or even a complete operating procedure on uh this sort of thing, emergency shelters. We have done that in the past. Um I would like to make a, I, I would like to set a framework. Uh of uh and establish and establish that process a little more so that we set uh temperature triggers. Uh and we've already identified exactly what's gonna happen, where we can stage donations and goods. Uh more effectively so that because we have multiple uh shelter operations in the city. We have a simple staging or any donation in that way. That everybody bringing them to the rec center and then we've got a roundup. Send people over there and round up some other, we said some other, to another shelter somewhere else in the city. Um I'd like to uh look at a central point, maybe even the park, lot, city hall. To take those donations uh within a twenty-four to forty-eight hour period. Because if we're dealing with emergency uh situations or uh emergency situations temperature wise. We're going to have at least some forewarning of those temperatures before they hit us. Uh at least a couple of days. And if we're able to uh take donations at large from the public. To establish a central point to stage that and then we'd be able to distribute that amongst the shelters that we do choose. Uh identified one at the Michael Center, one at our uh the Shepherd Rec across from our high school. And. So I've got the briefing on. Do uh. Do I have any question? Got a point?
You wanna share the problem statement?
Sure. So first of all, the purpose, establish a safe, consistent account of systems for providing temporary shelter during extreme weather. And emergency events. Problem statement is recent use of the Michael Center as an informal warming station resulted in unsecure access. Lack of staffing, interruption of public programming and safety sanitation issues, including animals inside. This occurred due to the absence of a formal policy activation criteria and staffing plan. Um. Policy goals for this, to ensure residents in crisis have a safe, dignified place to go. Maintain clear, consistent public communication, protect staff and volunteers through defined roles. Protect city property and facilities at these stations. Activation criteria, extreme cold, extreme heat, severe weather, tornado, tornado watches, tornado warnings. An emergency displacement, house fire, unsafe living conditions, evacuation uh operations, etc. And activation authority would be myself or EMA Director or a designated. Uh activation authority. The council is also notified but does not approve activation. Facility selection framework, the Michael Center, Shepherd Rec Center, Fire Station One on Second Street, Fire Station Two in West Montgomery. And partner churches. The fire stations would be for overflow only, just in case. And uh if uh. Not so much with the weather, the Michael Center and the Red Center could hold enough folks to uh suffice for for weather.
We've got storm shelters.
Yeah, in the storm shelters, uh but in the event that, you know, a tornado comes and 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 really, really hits us good.
The only thing I need to caution you about is that a lot of times when we use the micro setup and use the vector off. Is they're not really zoned for uh overnight state. They're not straight from and and different problems. We have to look into all of that before we open this up to protect them.
Very good point.
We've got to be real careful about.
Very good point. Thank, thank you. What do we need to do about that?
We have, we have, we have to find suitable scene buildings for this, so they've got to meet all the criteria before we can house.
Okay, okay. Well, that, that, that's the whole point of this is, is identifying all of this. I mean, we, we want something basically when it, when it's time, anybody can pull that out and go, okay. I mean, just straight up SOP, a standard operating procedure.
We don't wanna help somebody and then turn around and have a problem. We're trying to help and then we have a problem. Gotta be real careful with.
Okay, okay. Um, do we have city structures that meet that criteria already?
Not correct. I, yeah, I was in South Monette out last year with the rec department. Okay, I think because uh we had a conversation about the fire station. It was, it was, you know, but overnight state, you gotta, you gotta meet certain, certain codes. Case for mercy, somebody got the freeze death absolute. But we think, you know, gotta be real careful when you open. They don't make the code straight.
And that's something that I think we need to, I, uh, I don't, we weren't gonna do anything. We'll wait to adopt. Uh we gotta, we gotta show them that line.
You would give me a little time, I'll look into it and I'll be sure we're really good at it. This is uh, this, this is something that's not just a problem separately. It's a problem in all cities, in all states. They haven't in the whole state.
Storm shelters, uh sprinkled?
No, they're not, but they're also for temporary use.
Okay.
It's the overnight state that, that causes issue.
Okay. Thank you. Hey, so any questions about that? Moving on. So the next, next item is the cemetery equipment replacement. So. Parts with that too and we have quotes that uh gained our cemetery section and fire force. Uh those are in the pack there again. It's not known if this, this, uh these quotes were got before our terms started. Uh so it's kind of been something that's already in the works. So we're gonna ensure that that's already in the budget. That's something we're gonna have to behave. I think you guys might have any other funding at this point on this evening, at least that we do realize. Okay. Okay, so that's something that we can give. Hey, Mark, you had a question about the sky, no, just relative to.
Well, I, I, you know, I've talked with uh with Danny over there and. I don't think he gonna beat this.
Okay. You know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think he can beat this. Well. Well, the, the, the thing, the deal is, you know, I talked about another, going with another company. Their location is in the Elgin. This guy in Tuscon, you know, they can repair these. They're Johnny on the spot about getting prepared.
Right.
You know.
And the price.
And the price is right. So. You're not gonna beat this company. Not for a good professional.
Fortunately, right, we seem, fortunately, we have these two general honor councils now and they. So. So even though it's a capital expense, I mean, there's still gotta be money there. You know, get it. I mean, so we still need to look, see how much money we have. Okay. Cause this is a. Okay, okay. All right, it's a twenty-four thousand dollar purchase. Okay.
And my, my other thought was. If we bought something else somewhere, you know, from another dealer. And that grass gets behind the cemetery because we have a problem there. Could be a repeat of last year.
The, the.
We don't want that.
Yeah, and and for the public. The idea is this, this two new, two new mowers for our cemetery department. One of the mowers that they have now be uh transferred over to the street department, all right? And one's gonna be traded in and the street department's gonna.
Got one to trade in with it.
Yes. But we're gonna give, we're gonna give the better one to you guys and and trade. Trade in the lesser one along with the other one that's not doing real good at the cemetery department. So I have to uh and still get use of that use when in the street department, right? Any, any questions? So we can do that. Um number ten. It's the beauty of having a big giant initiative that takes up four, five points of uh of the work session. So number ten, Mayor and Council, the Dirty Thirty Program. It's quick hit, visible improvements across districts and large projects. To, to your point. One of mine is, I wanted to place sidewalks around our elementary school. Streets came around there, you know, that's one of my dirty, that's one of my top five for the city, because I'm at large, so they're going. But that's my mind is, I'm a big sidewalk, and I, uh, sorry, not sorry, but I think a city, especially one of my gowers. Got a great trail system, but let's, let's have a great sidewalks and along with that. That's, uh, that's what I'm gonna do. Um, our Dirty Thirty is a, uh, we our, uh, our secretary that had written down all of these is in Ohio. By the way, y'all, Dr. Ethan Stokes, our district three representative, uh, is attending a mandatory job training in another state, so he wasn't able, he's killing it. He was wanting, he just wanted to zoom call in so you could see his face or something, and I wouldn't mind him do it, but he would, he wanted everybody to, he, he, he really wanted to be here, and he is, uh, he's watching. And, uh, waved to Ethan, and, uh, but he, uh, uh, he did have all of these written down, was that, that he, when we were doing that, so. Uh, that too will be published on, on our website, and I'll do that either this evening or sometimes tomorrow afternoon, I'll have that up, and, and then I'll make some Facebook posts with the link on it, so that everybody can get to, get to this, all this stuff. All right. That's it for the work session. Anybody got anything? You got, got, got anything?
Will you get a resolution?
Yeah, I, you can get your resolution.
Email it, text it real quick. I can describe it if you'd like, and y'all can be with it next meeting if that's okay.
Yeah.
Would that be all right?
Sure, please.
Okay, uh.
Just go, we got it.
Yeah, I'll be very brief. Like two items, I could always come by, live down the street. Now, Tommy Barnes, County Commissioner, District One, uh, I was gonna propose to the Sydney Sheffield name change on behalf of the request from Bank Independent, who's invested a large amount of money on the TBA reservation. As you well know, that reservation is under renovation as far as sale and investments. Uh, the county, I think we have Commissioner George Bailey here also, the county has, uh, put forward a few million dollars to enhance sewer and water, and on behalf of, uh, working out that area for development. But we do have the, uh, Bank Independent has made a request, and I'm moving forward the resolution that was written by the county attorney to your attorney, and make sure everything's okay. We have a road in our district called Garage Road, and Bank Independent has requested it to be changed to Independent Lane. Uh, the county had approval of that as far as, uh, our discussions that we had in our last meeting. But of course, it's a, it's a road that's half owned by Sheffield, half of it, and the middle of the road on the other side is Muscle Shoals. I just presented this to Muscle Shoals, they have copies of the resolution, they're available on it. Because you're basically Garage Road makes you think, where am I turning into Garage, or hurting the statue, it's a nice road, so. That is the request that we will take. If you pass the resolution, we'll take it back to the EMA nine one one and do the signage change, changes to make sure that and everyone has the right E nine one one addresses. Any questions on that, uh, road change?
I'm so, that's my fault.
Who what?
I know it, really.
Yeah, you got the right of way on one side, on the north side, Sheffield, and on the south side uh, is Muscle Shoals. So, if I get a call from TBA, they always call me first, and they, I'll call Sheffield, I ask them which side of the road is on in order to get the, uh, the debris picked up. The boundaries between Sheffield and Muscle Shoals.
So, I mean, my, my question is, is necessary for us to do that, or would it be Muscle Shoals? Okay, is that, is that?
Well, you know, that since that annexation, that's one of the reasons I wanted to make sure you looked at it, but the road is a I guess you could say it's on GPS anyway. I don't think it really matters to Muscle Shoals and Sheffield as far as signage, really just to make sure it's consistent with both municipalities. Now, the reservation road, uh, really missed the potentially doing an over project, the three lane map, but the reason the signage is important, TBA at this present day owns the road. Okay, TBA owns the road, but we're in the middle of trying to transfer those roads over to the municipalities or counties or whatever down the way. Reservation road is in discussions right now, maybe become a part of Sheffield or uh, the county, but we have not had those discussions. I'm just gonna be upfront, we've not had those discussions, so of course they got a turn, but TBA is wanting to get away from that, but they have written that they will always keep up the right of ways, which incur a lot of costs. So, that's the issue, but the issue is the resolution we have that just changes the road name on behalf of, uh, request from Bank Independent, the person that made the request was, uh, John Boeing, along with Dustin White. I assume that was on, in behalf of them. TBA, they called TBA to see if they would object. They said, call commission and text here for E nine one one, and I told my, so that's, that's how I'm assuming. So, my's got to. And. Any questions? Y'all can bring that up, discuss it next meeting. I just wanted to throw it out there. You have it emailed out, just sent to you to make sure it gets the Lisa and printed for all y'all on the next. Or, so, if that's up there.
The, uh, I'm not sure if it's free, it's gonna talk to me after this week. I've already gotten in trouble my first week on the job. See, all, all this, and, uh.
Well.
It did, yeah.
You didn't get it, Tom.
Yeah. It's not, it's not her fault at all.
The item number two that I was gonna put out, uh, out there, of course, is number one, thank you for what Sheffield has done for Keep the Shoals Beautiful. We've had cleanups here, we've had cleanups countywide, but Sheffield has been very supportive of the endeavors of Keep the Shoals Beautiful. We go into classrooms, I'm even substituting right now, and I'll bring that out, the cause of for young kids to learn the importance of not littering, and also the importance of recycling, and by the way, every ton of garbage that goes to the landfill, you know, a dollar gets put in a coffer that we get that money back to the red side, and but but Keep the Shoals Beautiful aims at outreach, and aims at litter prevention, and when you pick ups, we supply all the trailer contents, which bags, gloves, grabbers, uh, anything you think of as far as safety equipment. Uh, the Tennessee Riverline, of course, is always, the river cleanup has always been along, uh, Riverfront Park, and they have the other side over it, and the MacFarland. But I want to thank you for the $2,500 that you've given us annually for the last decade or so. Uh, I don't know if it's been that much, but, but the last year it's been that, and I'm gonna let you give an invoice and talk and discuss that. I know times are tough. And you can credit back a little bit, we totally understand, but we're gonna keep working and working, picking up litter uh, during these, uh, times to try to keep the shoals beautiful, just like the Act of the Year says. And it's a passion of mine. I think you see many times, and county is judged by its debris and its cleanliness, and I think it's a very important thing to both penalize the ones that destroy our, the reputation of our cities, but also believe it's our accountability to train and use these funds as accountable, and I know you have many, many elected officials from Sheffield and Muscle Shoals that take part on that board that actually shows up to clean up the area. So, I mean, the labor, the point, but I'm gonna leave this brochure as to what we've done and what we accomplished. I am a board member, that takes volunteer hours to do it, and I just, because it's important, I hate to ride, our state we need to improve on recycling rates, we need to improve and educate people in importance. I mean, we've got S C now who that takes dartboard, we have plastic recycling, we even take glass if we recycle. And also the aluminum, uh, business, where I've been 21 years at Reynolds Muggs, it's it's 70% cheaper to get it from a hand than to refine the ore and make, uh, uh, aluminum as far as energy. So, there's some good things going on, and I think this is a worthy way of spending some money, but if it's, like I said, if it's too much, we'll come up with a money from other places too. Oh, okay. Well, how many washes do you have? Well, I ain't washing that time, but I'll give you. Thank you. And welcome aboard, and thank y'all for what you do.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry I didn't know that. I've been hiding from Bridgette as much as I could today, because well, she's trying to give.
Muscle Shoals lost their resolution. I had sent it to them, so, anyway, but it's all taken care of on the, on the road, but they, they're gonna prove it if they're next.
They might have to fill out a FOIA request.
I need to come back and fill out any paperwork, but. Any questions?
Thanks, Tom. One item that is on the actual agenda that we did mention in the work session is the pricing, the VPS, which is virtual private server. Uh, it's hosting options and term length, uh, and a cost comparison on that term length. There's discounts to be had with extended terms, three, two, three years, two years, and single year, and then month to month, of course, uh, and even half a year. Uh, so there's pretty significant, uh, difference between month to month and year to year, the difference being, uh, a good 65, $65. $65 a month is the difference. I'm recommending that we choose 12 month, uh, and pay annually uh, on that, but, uh. So, it'd actually be on the control panel options. Uh, the control panel options, uh, the option that I'm asking for is the blessed web host addition at the 29.99 a month. And then the VPS term length pricing would be on the 12 months annual pricing at the 99.99. And then the security add-on, web security standard, 7.99 a month. The total annual cost of 16.55 and 16.4 cents, $1,655 and 64 cents a year. Uh, what this gives us is the ability to host unlimited domains, uh, rapidly deploy uh, web forms and other system automations in rapid fashion as opposed to having to call and get approval and get sign offs and two FAs, things from various people with parts, but, uh, our center of theshoals.com, hiringsheffield.com, the jobs board, jobs portal for our citizens, ultimate Sheffield Business Director dot com being a, uh, business directory that highlights just Sheffield businesses. Give us a leg up on the search engines, stuff like that, showcase, showcase some of that, and center of theshoals.com will be an aggregate of all that information field on our redevelopment marketing, redevelopment, fast track initiatives for developers, jobs boards, jobs announcements, events, citywide events, I'd say new businesses that come online, all of this information, it's then to center of theshoals.com, but all that can be hosted on that VPS without any other. One a monthly house, so we can basically scale that in any existing applications that the city has, that we're actually paying extra for, we would also be able to host those. I wrote that, so, I'd say, I haven't identified those, and one that I would that, uh, is, is taking a look at, it's, uh, our library. Actually, I actually own Sheffield Public Library dot com. Which, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna donate all of these to the city, which I'm gonna ask you guys to, to, to be simple. Those are, those are all domains that I purchased that are on, I, I own one of these VPS servers I have one since 2002, and I'm able to, I have over 100, 150, I don't know if that's, so, there's plenty of room. It's not gonna, it's not like we're gonna have to come back in a year or two without. And, uh, and then that just gives us, that gives us the capability, and this is the backbone for the entirety of the digital infrastructure plans, city. Gives us, gives every check, budget, if we're with that, we could imagine. Anything else? Anybody else see about that? That concludes our work session, our first work session in the books, and we'll head right into our regular general meeting, uh, City Council. Recall the City Council meeting to work. We have a vote call. Everybody who said, Dr. Pete. Okay. It's killing, it's killing, it's killing it worse than my own. Okay. Full arise.
Let's pray. So, we're coming to you tonight, we're a brand new council, uh, show us a little grace. So we're coming to you tonight. We're a brand new council. Show us a little grace. I believe I myself, I don't go back to rest of it. I feel about like a post turtle up here. Just let us let us do the good works for our residents here in the city and ultimately ultimately, we need to be honoring you as we're doing in Jesus's name. Amen.
I need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. Motion. Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those same. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes from November 3rd meeting of a motion. Second. Motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those same. Motion carries. On the resolutions, please. Board of members. Is we just read names, right? I did. I don't know again, but I did. Lisa and I have been co-conspiring against you guys tonight. Number one, establish composition of city council committees. Which we know. Number two, authorization of procurement of the virtual private server V P S hosting services for the city of Sheffield. Number three. Yes, ma'am. Okay, so then okay, gotcha. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Sheffield, then the following committee appointed and are hereby approved. Finance and administration, which encompasses the city clerk's office, board of education, librarian, senior center. Yes, court communications and listening. Got Ms. Carol Cooney, Miss Constance Finch, Dr. Ethan Stoves. Public safety, which encompasses the building and code enforcement, fire department, police department and our city garage. Dr. Ethan Stoves, Carol Cooney, John Webb. Public works, which encompasses Sheffield utilities, streets and sanitation, cemetery and parks and recreation, Sheffield Housing Authority. Miss Constance Finch, John Webb, and Mr. Hart Gargus. I need a motion to accept to approve this.
All motion.
Second. Thank you. Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those say same. Curious. Number two, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Sheffield that whereas the city of Sheffield is in the process of modernizing and securing its digital infrastructure, including the transition to the federal federally verified SheffieldAlabama.gov domain and the deployment of multiple resident facing platforms. And whereas the city requires a dedicated virtual private server, V P S with adequate adequate performance, security, scalability to host the new city website, email systems, data services and related municipal platforms. And whereas the mayor has presented the available V P S hosting options, associated term links and cost comparisons to the city council during November 17, 2025 work session. And whereas city council finds it in the best interest of the public to authorize the procurement of the V P S hosting services in order to ensure continuity of operations, improved cybersecurity and reliable public ask access to information and services. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Sheffield, Alabama, as follows. Number one, authorization to procure services. The mayor is hereby authorized to procure V P S virtual private server hosting services for the city of Sheffield, included and associated control panel license plus web host edition and website security standard package. Spending authority, total expenditure for the V P S hosting, control panel licensing and security services shall not exceed the $1,655.64. So 1655 and 64. Selection of term length, the city council authorized the mayor to select the V P S term length that best serves the city's operational and financial interests. As noted, I pointed to the annual thing as opposed to the 24 months or 36 months. The cost difference was negligible, but the actual upfront cost is what I was looking at primarily. The difference between $3,200 and $1,600. Implementation and technical transition upon arrival of the and approval of government of the SheffieldAlabama.gov domain by G S A, C A, I S A. The mayor is authorized to oversee the migration of all city websites, email systems, digital services and resident facing platforms to the V P S environment under the .gov transition. Reporting requirement, the mayor shall provide the council with a summary of the final procurement and term lengths selected at the next regular meeting following purchase. Adopted and approved on this the 17th day of November, 2000. 2025. Do I have a motion to approve?
Same.
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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those, that's same. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Sheffield that whereas the city of Sheffield is committed to improving livability, community engagement in public spaces for residents of all ages and to providing enhanced services for older adults and persons with special needs. And whereas the A A R P Community Challenge Grant Program operated by A A R P through its livable communities initiative provides quick action grants to local governments and nonprofits for projects that create immediate improvements and support long-term change in communities nationwide. Whereas the program is open to local governments and I R S recognized nonprofit organizations and covers projects that improve public spaces, transportation, housing, digital connectivity, community resilience, particularly serving adults age 50 and older. Whereas the city of Sheffield desires to submit two separate applications, one on behalf of the Michael Center and one on behalf of the Sheffield Senior Center in support of the broader Sheffield 365 Raise the Standard Initiative. And whereas the city council finds that participation in the A A R P Community Challenge will leverage external funds, enhance existing city programs for older residents and persons with special needs and further the goal of restoring community pride and high quality public spaces in Sheffield. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Sheffield, Alabama. Mayor is hereby authorized to prepare, submit and execute on behalf of the city of Sheffield up to two applications under the A A R P Community Challenge Grant Program, one for the Michael Center and one for the Senior Center. City of Sheffield shall provide any required matching or in kind contributions as described in the grant applications, which there are done. There are no matching or in kind donations as part of subject to appropriation and approval by city council as part of the fiscal year 2026 budget for subsequent amendments. The mayor is authorized to accept any award grants entered into grant agreements and collaborate with the Michael Center, the Senior Center and any associated nonprofit or city departments required by the grant terms, provided that all agreements are reviewed by the city attorney and conform to applicable state federal grant requirements. City clerk is directed to provide certified copies of this resolution to the mayor of the city's grants administrator, the Michael Center, the Senior Center, the appropriate A A R P program office and to file a copy with the official records of the city of Sheffield. This resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption, adopted and approved this 17th day of November, 2025. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the mayor applied for two A A R P Community Challenge Grants for the Michael Center and the Sheffield Senior Center.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion same. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those the same. Be it resolved by city council of the city of Sheffield that whereas the city of Sheffield recognizes the improving, that improving the appearance safety of the city is essential to the well-being of its residents, businesses, schools and neighborhoods. Whereas decades of inconsistent property standards enforcement, limited manpower and uneven maintenance practices have contributed to the widespread deterioration across major corridors and residential areas. And whereas the mayor and the city council are permitted to restore community pride, strengthening property values, supporting economic development, reestablishing consistent expectations for public and private spaces. And whereas the mayor has presented a comprehensive initiative entitled Raise the Standard Sheffield 365, which includes a seven month cleanup of the major corridors leading into the city center, a five month district by district neighborhood cleanup, a synchronized citywide mailing of property ordinance violation notices, a 365 day compliance period beginning the day the last notice is mailed, a temporary pause on all new property ordinance enforcement during that period, the establishment of a volunteer support network, the evaluation of additional staffing options to include not limited to the A D O C governmental inmate work program. And whereas several components of the Sheffield 365 require detailed budget review, manpower and equipment planning, technological infrastructure, external funding discussions and legal review before being finalized. And whereas the city council desires a structured, transparent adoption timeline and hereby designates the December 1st, 2025, the December 15th, 2025 regular meetings of the city council as the dates for final consideration and approval of all operational, financial and legal components of this initiative. And whereas the city intends for the unified program to officially commence immediately following city council action on December 15th, 2025. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of city council of the city of Sheffield, Alabama, the city of Sheffield hereby formally adopts the framework of Raise the Standard Sheffield 365 as the city's official cleanup and community standards initiative. The council designates December 1 and December 15th, 2025 as the formal base for consideration, finalization and adoption of all program components, including budget allocations, manpower plans, equipment procurement, volunteer support systems, the ordinance enforcement pause, violation notice protocols and any associated agreements. Full implementation of Raise the Standard Sheffield 365 shall commence immediately following council action on December 15th, 2025, at which time preparation for the citywide violation notice mail out, volunteer now work deployment and corridor cleanup staging shall begin. The mayor is authorized to continue all regulatory work, interdepartmental coordination, public communication and external partnership discussions necessary to bring all components for for December approval. This resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption and shall be entered into the official minutes of the city of Sheffield, approved and adopted on this 17th day of November, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Same.
A second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say same. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Sheffield that whereas the Alabama Simplified Seller Use Tax, S S U T Remittance Act defined as section 4923-191, Code of Alabama, 1975, established a process by which the state of Alabama collects use taxes from eligible sellers on behalf of Alabama consumers. And whereas on October 12th, 2025, the city of Tuscaloosa, the school district of the city of Tuscaloosa and the city of Mount Brook filed a lawsuit on a certain court of Montgomery County, Alabama against Vernon Barnett and his official capacity as commissioner of the Alabama Department of Revenue, asking the court to direct Commissioner Barnett to disqualify particular business entities from the S S U T program. And whereas on November 10th, 2025, the court imposed a 30 day deadline for any other interested parties to file motions to intervene in this litigation. And whereas the S S U T program has been an essential source of revenue for the city of Sheffield and the plaintiff's lawsuit is successful, which jeopardized the city's ability to maintain that current level of governmental services and provides to the public. Be it resolved by the Sheffield City Council that the city is directed to take all necessary actions, whether by itself or as a part of a joint undertaking to intervene as a defendant in the S S U T litigation and to protect the city's interest in this critical revenue. And witness thereof, the city council of the city of Sheffield has caused this resolution to be executed in its name and on its behalf by its chair on this 17th day of November.
I'm not prepared with this litigation. Where did we get?
Tori, you want to fill us in?
Sorry, I should have called you. The long story short, I mean, counties have been aware of the situation for some time. It used to be that that the state of Alabama is speeding things from online sale. But basically what happens is anytime someone buys something from Amazon, there's a money there. All right. So now you're you're kind of remembering. So there's been a bit of a fire investigation money currently, you know, from the state of Alabama. Well, real currently, the state of Alabama sits 50% of the F S C money. The other 50% is divided between cities and counties. 40% goes to the counties. 30% goes to the cities based on population. The big 10, the 10 largest cities in the state of Alabama are trying to get more of the money. That's what's happening. It's unlikely that the 50% that the state of things is going to be touched, which means that if the counties and the smaller cities, the cities that are not the two largest cities, state of Alabama, are the ones who have been forced currently using thousands and thousands of dollars. Mr. and Mrs. Brian has the amount. Do you want to share with that what the city of Sheffield got just last year from November 1st, 2024?
I don't have.
To November 1st, okay, to November 1st, 2025, the state, the city of Sheffield currently got 951,118 dollars. I would say that again, 951,118 dollars came to the city of Sheffield from S S C money. If the larger cities prevail in this, then what's going to happen is that money is going to probably go away. Currently also, the money that goes to the county, that 20% that comes to Calvert County is divvied up in large part to your cities. $50,000 going to your schools is coming out of the S S C money. So if we lose it, then your schools lose it, then you guys lose it. So we're hoping that everyone comes together. Basically, this is a, this is a, this is a legal point. They were trying to add in another party. So what we're trying to do is get as many parties as possible to join in in hopes that the judge will stop it and possibly dismiss. If they prevail, the larger cities will win, our smaller cities and our counties will lose. So this is just all of us coming together, setting one voice.
What do we do? Who represents us?
Well, Calvert County is going to be Edgar and you can, you and Edgar can get together. But it's likely to be wrong.
Who?
You know, it's likely the judge will throw it out if all of us show up. But we need to do it.
That's a big chunk of change. We can't afford to lose.
Ms. Bailey, can you give us those dates again?
That amount, that 951,118 dollars was was from November 1st, 2024 to November 1st, 2025. That's one of the, that was mine. You can't afford it. You can't afford it.
The judge, remember, he. No, I'm not.
Yeah, the city were, is aware of this. The counties have been fighting this for three years. But now they're coming after the city.
I'll check with Edgar. Pass the motion. If that's a motion, Hollywood, that's too bad.
Alright.
There's probably one. There's probably one law firm that's handling it all.
Yeah, ATTA is, is very much involved in this. Association of County Commissioners of Alabama, but Sun Braskville is involved and he'll call you too.
Okay.
I'll have to call you. So if you'll, if you'll pass it, then we're passing it tomorrow.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion. Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of those saying. Motion carries. Thank you. Number six, Lisa. Yeah, it was because it's the attachment is the actual form documentation, application for that program. We're going to table that because we've got some, got some liability questions. We've got a certification process that's necessary prior to this and also. I think I had.